Are you ready? All right, Kathy, are you ready? It's right there. If not, I have extra, can you remember? All right, I'll do my spiel first, okay. All right, we are back in for our work session. So, we're gonna do this just a little bit differently than we did last year, where we just all sat up here and like fired questions at Mrs. McCork. And they were very random and scattered all across the budget. So, I think you guys have an updated presentation first. And then, if it's okay with the board, which I kind of fronted it with everyone on an email, is we'll just go through tab by tab. And then that way, we can centralize all the questions about one budget category at once, and then we're not jumping all over the place. If that's okay.
Excellent. So that's exactly how we've structured this.
Okay, good.
So, I wanted to start by just giving a recap of where we were at the last board meeting. The official enrollment for a school year 2015 was seventeen eight eighty-seven. However, the official enrollment increase for 2016 to seventeen nine forty-one. On the flip side, the actual students eligible for state aid was sixteen thousand nine fifty-seven in 2015, but declined to sixteen nine thirty-three in 2016.
Oh my-
That's why we needed bottled water. That's why we needed bottled water. Thought we were saving money, but it's not worth it. Oh well. Oh well. And I moved everything away. And it's on tape. And it's on tape. Well, she could rewind and delete. All right. It was planned. Yes, I did.
See? You see, Rita brings her sippy cup.
Yeah, I got my sippy cup. We have saved money. From Skimshaw USA.
Oh well.
Okay, you two sippy cups next time.
What? All right.
All right, so let's start over again. So just as a reminder, the PPE calculation does not include for inflationary cost increase or any incremental increases of fixed charges, any new instructional mandates, or negotiation of employee compensation. If you recall, their budget priority, number one is people. We invest in our people. SESMIC, ESMIC, SMASA. Salaries and wages consist of one hundred and forty-four million dollars of the superintendent's proposed budget. Additionally, the fixed charges to include healthcare, social security, retirement workers, compensation, insurance consists of forty-eight million dollars of the superintendent's proposed budget. Ninety-one point six percent of the unrestricted fund is associated with people. Budget priority number two are our programs. We invest in the instructional resources and in technology to engage, educate, and communicate. Whoops. That consists of five point seven million dollars. Some of the highlights include one point four million dollars for science textbooks, one point five million dollars for high school computers, and increases in program MOI. As a recap, the requested increases are predominantly in the areas of people. More than fifty percent of the pie is going there. For new negotiations of four million dollars are current, already obligated negotiations of two point four million dollars, healthcare costs of one point four million dollars. Of course, our twelve new K-PARAs were requested of five hundred thousand dollars. Social Security of one hundred and eighty thousand. Pension, three hundred thousand dollars. Computers, one point five million dollars. Science textbooks, one point four million dollars. MOI and software, two hundred and eighty thousand. And transportation, one hundred and forty thousand. Of that, the required increases that we absolutely have to have in next year's budget are four point nine million dollars. So as far as the big picture, we're requesting an increase of ten point five million dollars, a five point three percent increase over the 2016 budget. On the operating side, we'll go through this in a little bit more detail in a few minutes. But predominantly, the increases were in the instructional salaries and wages of four million dollars. Special education of one point one million dollars, and fixed charges of two point five million dollars. So now, I'd like to provide the opportunity for each of you to go through each of the categories and ask any questions. I did provide you a sheet of some proposed decreases as a result of the decrease in state aid. In particular, in the administration category, we're recommending a decrease of twenty million, twenty thousand one hundred dollars from the original superintendent's requested increase of one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars.
May I ask-
Yeah, go ahead.
-a question about the proposed decreases? If you just wanna do administration, I'll wait, 'cause I think my question is in mid-level administration.
Yes, if we could start with just administration.
So specifically, the documents that you, that the board has in front of them are the proposed decreases to the budget from the previous session based on the state funding coming in less than we had anticipated. And so, on the one document under administration, everything else holds current with the original proposal. But we're proposing the reduction of the six hundred dollars to the media allocation, seventeen hundred dollars to fiscal services media allocation, seventeen thousand dollars decrease to postpone the implementation of DocStar, and specifically the DocStar cloud hosting, and then technology hardware. So the overall administrative category, we're looking to cut about twenty thousand dollars out of that. So just to give an idea of how we're going through this. So this would be an appropriate time. As on the administrative category, if you had clarifying questions for anyone who were in the budget document, if you could do a time, if you'd like answering those questions.
Well, I have one question on the DocStar cloud hosting. So with the, with the adjustment, there's nothing inherently from a, from a security, from an IT security standpoint, that's wrong with the system that we have now. This was just a plan, a, an upgrade to the existing system and the cloud hosting, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
Since then, we have bought new servers that we believe will be able to support the DocStar.
Okay.
So, and that decrease in the DocStar for the administration, will that, is that reflected in any other area then?
No.
No, it's, it's this question on the ones that we submitted right here. It's all of this. So, so just, so what they did is anything that is on this sheet here, and that is adjusted, they highlighted in red on here.
Okay, okay, got it.
Is that, that's right?
I most probably guess.
Okay.
Okay, all right, administration, go.
Okay.
Any additional questions on administration?
I don't know, Rita?
I do.
Okay.
I still have a question on the non-capitalized equipment. I know that, I know I spent numerous hours going through the budget, and I know Karen has too, and we submitted, both of us submitted questions, you know, for you to have ahead of time. And I know what your answer was for the non-capitalized equipment, for, you know, for that. But I guess, I feel because we are in, we really need to start pulling together money from, you know, different areas to try to even out our budget. You know, I guess is, there are ways that we can go look at furniture that we have here and kind of try to readjust how we're, you know, setting up furniture and offices and things like that, to try to save this money. Instead of going out and purchasing new. So that's kind of-
Certainly.
I'm trying to keep track of what we're crossing off here, so. Anything else under executive administration? So that covers for, for those that, well, there are times we don't have this. So that will cover everything from tabs A, B, C, D, E, F.
Oh, wait a minute, I have a question on D, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh no, okay, you've answered it, sorry. I saw, 'cause I was, I didn't understand the split in the FTEs.
Two different.
They were two different. And what it is, is sometimes someone does more than, has more than one job. And I was just trying to figure out where the other part of that FTE had gone. So, that's answered F.
All right. And that also, administration also covers tab D, E.
So in general, for the viewing audience, the tabs that you're referring to are all the programs within the administration category, which would consist of the superintendent's office, the Board of Education, fiscal services, IT, and human resources.
All right, and then my question on, under the IT, the technology hardware. I'm under tab F, account number seven three five six. So that was, that is all just, I don't want to say, like, regular tech upgrades that is needed within, that's not any, just to clarify, that's not any large purchases for high school, middle school, elementary school, anything like that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
You'll find that within the instructional cost category. We'll talk about that in just a few minutes.
The only question I had would be under tab B, the board member's allowance. I know because of the way board member allowance has been structured, that can pose a real challenge in terms of who's at an entry level, who's, and so presumably, this takes into account at least one new board member, and then the adjustment. And I know it's, it's a split year because it starts for the newest person in December.
Certainly, it's our best guess at this time.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Okay. All right, Mary, do you think on A through?
She answered all the questions.
Okay.
So moving on to-
I have one question. In the technology hardware, I probably have to catch up. It says that there are twenty-eight hundred and fifty-two laptops. What is our, our goal, or what is the plan on laptops?
Ultimately, the goal that we're seeking is one to three. Consistently, one to three for every single, every single student. That is the, but not only one to three, but also one to three operational, completely upgraded with the most recent software connecting to our internet, an internet connection that's robust and consistent and works throughout. So that's really where we're, that's really where we're building. So, a lot of the money that we're putting towards technology isn't to put in additional computers, it's to take offline, those that are not performing the way they need to be performing, and to retire some of them that have been used for the last seven years. But the goal is one to three.
Thank you.
Okay, so that covers up through tab G.
So in the category of mid-level administration-
Oh wait, wait, one more. Sorry. On human resources, we highlighted the increase in training for the recruitment trips. And I just, I just wanted to say, I think putting that additional money in there for the additional recruitment trips, just, you know, to varying educational schools, I think is a good idea, so.
Thank you.
And from what, from the question I asked, and what we have seen in our minority recruitment and hiring, I think that that's been a valuable program that, and process in order to, to increase that, that pool of applicants.
And I also had the same question. And what Ms. McCork, or I don't know, maybe Mr. Smith had put back, it's not just for, also for, you know, going out and finding, you know, a diverse population, but also trying to get those hard to find-
Math, science, special ed, chemistry-certified teachers, you know-
Speech-language pathologists.
Yeah, psychologists, SLPs, yeah.
Yeah, the visually impaired teachers. So it's, it's a wide range of areas. And you said you also go to Pennsylvania, Ohio, Michigan, and New York to help recruit from those, for those specific type of jobs, so.
All right, anything else on, and what have we just left? Administration. Okay. So, for us up here, it's tab H is where we are now.
So under the category of mid-level administration, we originally requested an increase of seven hundred and ninety-one thousand. We're now proposing a due case of that amount by thirty-six thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars. That includes the discontinuance of the middle states evaluations, a new evaluation of the utilities and communications account, and reducing that by forty-six thousand dollars, and a slight increase to, of twelve thousand dollars to software, hardware, maintenance. And this is reflective of a movement of all of our e-school costs into one account. So you also note a decrease in another category.
So on this one, a couple of questions. The mid-states evaluations, not participating in that, what impact will that have?
Turns out it'll have very little to none. We're one of the last counties in the state of Maryland still participating in middle states. Middle states, although truly accreditation for growth slash middle states, quite a robust program in the early nineties, has dwindled over time, and is now, it's more, it's more of an historical exercise than anything else. The school system's not expected to gain accreditation from the middle states program or accredited by the state of Maryland. So, as the, the last two iterations that we, that we've gone through, we, we as a county have spent all of this time organizing, polling, surveying, doing, and then we have a visitation group that comes down, sometimes quite ill-prepared, and then they go through the motions of a several-day visit, and then we don't get a report back for a year. So, the, we're gonna follow the trend of other LAAs in the state of Maryland by simply saying, thank it was a fantastic program, we're no longer gonna participate.
Very good. And on the utilities, the communications, help me understand that a little bit more. What specifically?
What we found is that we have not been utilizing the, the volume of money that we've been budgeting in that particular account. So we, we actually went back and looked at historical trends, and their trends for this year have been much lower.
Okay, but I guess communications, I mean, are we talking phone system?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so now, we are still on, for us- All right, we're still on B. So, office of the principal. Go, Rita.
Okay, I, I guess I looked at the breakdown of, you know, the principals, the assistant principals, you know, the academic deans. And I guess, when I was looking across the board, Chesapeake Charter School has one principal and two academic deans for a total of like approximately three hundred and sixty students. When I looked at, let's say, Piney Point Elementary School, there's one principal and one assistant principal, four hundred and ninety-five. Evergreen, one principal, one assistant principal, for seven hundred and ten. George Washington Carver, one principal, one assistant, for six hundred and forty students. Can you, you know, and I don't know if, and this has to be a send-out to them, the justification for two academic deans for a small school? Or assist, yeah, the, what is it, the, not the principal, yeah, but the assistant principal or academic dean?
Well, as the, as the Chesapeake Public Charter School is, is a charter school, and we provide pass-through funding for them, they do determine how they utilize that funding to hire and retain staff. And ultimately, it's the choice of the Chesapeake Public Charter School and the directors and the board as to, as to what kind of funds they wish to allocate towards administrative functions opposed to the classroom.
And the, by the board, you mean the alliance, not, not us?
The alliance, thank you for the correction.
Yeah, that's an important distinction.
But in them deciding, 'cause I did go through the contract, which I was not aware of, all this going on, because it happened before I came on the board. But I did go through it, but, you know, I guess I'm looking at, if they decide where they wanna spend the funds, if they're deciding to spend it on that, let's say, on two academic deans versus, let's say, a teacher, then that's more costly to the system.
Well, it's, 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 the cost of the system is the same. We give them a PPA, and they determine how they wish to spend those, those funds. So, it, it doesn't, I mean, they could, they could staff the Chesapeake Public Charter School with, you know, a multitude of administrators if they so choose. The impact is the class size perhaps for that building, but that, again, that doesn't, it doesn't fall under our purview. What I, what I can certainly do is I can, I can follow up with Ms. Funya, and I can ask for her to provide some insight into the, into the staffing plan for the school.
And that would, that would be, that would be helpful since, as we go through this later on, they will be requesting another teacher. So that's where I'm like, okay, if, you know where I'm going with that, so.
And, and so people understand, the charter agreement that was written is based on what the law says, and, so it wasn't, it wasn't the members of the board at that time just saying, well, you know, let's give them this, let's give them this. It, it really is, comes down to a function of, by the number of students they have, we're required to give them a certain amount of, of per pupil funding. And, and where it goes beyond that, it's, it's their choice. So, the charter agreement reflects the negotiations in the areas that we could negotiate with the charter school, and, and then further is reflective really of the decisions that have been handed down by the state board when various appeals have gone to them over issues. And the majority of the charter schools in the state really are in Baltimore City. But there are a few elsewhere, so.
Well, I, I do have to say that I think that, looking at the agreement now that I'm seeing, that maybe the board, the attorney at that time, and the superintendent at that time maybe should have looked more carefully at what was being agreed upon for some of those things, so.
Like I said, I can work back with Mrs. Hall and ask Ms. Funya to give kind of an overview of the staffing and their decision-making as in, as an information item back to the board.
Okay. Tab I. It was all part of the SMASA agreement. Tab J, which is instructional administration and supervision.
Oh, I know what I wanted to ask. Just in general, can you explain how the stipends, 'cause those were my questions, could you just, in general, explain how the stipends work for the administrative area and how the stipends work for the ESMIC and SESMIC?
Sure. So under the category of mid-level administration is where we would find the stipends for SMASA employees. And that's all per the negotiated agreement, specifically Article VII, Section D. Within that, we have all the National Board certifications that have been earned by the SMASA members. If there were any other specialized areas, for example, engineering licenses, things of that nature. So, any kind of specialized certifications that are, are something that the employee had to go above and beyond to obtain, and are clearly delineated and specified within the SMASA agreement, are charged to the mid-level administration. Now, with respect to the ESMIC employees, that would predominantly be under category three, the next category that we'll discuss, of instructional salaries. That could consist of mentor stipends, National Board certifications, and teaching for the SLP therapists, nursing and audiology, if they had any additional nationally-recognized certifications. And that's clearly delineated within their contract as well. They also receive stipends if they are, have any additional instructional responsibilities. For example, if they're department chairs or grade-level team leads.
Okay, thank you for answering that.
Sorry. That brings us to the end of mid-level administration. Let's go through tab J. We need the signal. But while, while Rita's looking at her notes, I just, once again, I have to compliment everyone on the amount of time that, and detail that is involved in this budget. I mean, I know, I still asked a lot of questions, I'm sure, as it seemed to you. But even, even as you were moving things between category, with the exception of, of the teachers that were being kind of shifted around that I needed a mass reconciliation of, it's, it has a lot of detail, and it, I answered a lot, a lot of questions were answered, and some of the things that I had questioned, you know, like, on the, I think I had a question here about where were we on replacement of cremation boards and smart boards? And lo and behold, they were on, it was on the agenda, because I looked at the budget before I looked at board docs. So, you know, hats off to everyone, 'cause I know this was a tremendous amount of work, and I know there were several new faces in key positions that, you know, so, just great job, everyone.
It was absolutely a collaborative effort.
Thank you to all those people that I know stayed up late to answer Karen and I's sixteen pages' worth of questions.
The nice thing was you, you all pretty much covered everything, so there was no reason to, to add to it.
Yeah, 'cause it came, it would turn around time was pretty quick.
And a great utilization of technology, setting it up as a Google Doc, sharing it with all the people that needed to edit, and all the people who could view and comment, so you could see in real-time people in their framing responses.
Okay, so we're through J.
Uh, J, yeah. I think the next one is-
Okay, the next one is instructional salaries, so let's, let's hand you your slide.
Okay, so out of the four million dollar original requested increase, we're now recommending a decrease of that of five hundred and fifty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars. This comes on the back of the reduction in the state aid. Therefore, the recommendation then is to reduce the twelve paraeducators that were originally submitted to the tune of two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars against this account. And then you'll see some of the other effects of that, those position cuts within fixed charges for social security and healthcare. Additionally, within this category, we're recommending a reduction of two hundred and eighty-five thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars for two reasons. We realized last night that there was a duplication of the National Board stipend for the teachers within this line. In addition, the APC is, stipend has been discontinued by MSDE.
So on this one, I know I shared earlier, you have, in the documentation and the notes, a point five FTE was, I'm sorry, move point five FTE, art teacher, and point seven five FTE to CPCs, to the Chesapeake Public Charter School. I'm, I'm not comfortable with the verbiage. I mean, this, all of the teachers, including those at the charter school, are employees of St. Mary's County Public Schools. But when it shows that we are transferring a teacher, or we're transferring a position or multiple positions, it, it really is that we are cutting that resource from the traditional side, and we're providing the charter school with the monies required to hire the positions they need. And it's, and that's, I, I'd like to make that distinction. I mean, we're, we're losing something, admittedly, as you say, as they add a class, and they're adding twenty or twenty-four students.
Twenty.
Then they're looking at, we're, we have perhaps less of a need on the traditional side, but the fact is that those students will not come from a single school.
They don't come in a tidy little package.
They don't come in a little box. And so, that's going to mean that the, the rest of the staff have additional responsibilities to deal with students. And, so the idea that we're transferring an FTE, to me, is not an accurate reflection. We're cutting it, and then those positions will then migrate to the charter school. And, and so, at, bottom line, we're not changing the total number of FTEs within the overall school system. It's where they're allocated, but it really is a cut to one side, um, to provide.
Now, I know I, I provided in my notes the statistics because I'm a number person, um, you know, and for the record, I do appreciate charter schools. I think they are a wonderful idea, a, um, you know, great choice for some students and for some parents. But what I'm having a hard time swallowing is that right at this current time, and I did, you know, I, I went on, uh, not only the information we have, but also on the state, uh, website going down through just information. And I have provided, I put it in a, you know, my notes and I send it to everybody. So, just an example of, um, Evergreen Elementary School, uh, third grade. Um, there's twenty-five point eight students per class and Chesapeake Charter, it's twenty-two. Um, one of the, the big ones that was very glaring to me is Letty Dent, fifth grade, uh, twenty-six point five students per class. Um, charter school is twenty-one. I know that they are trying to cap off at twenty. But where I'm having a difficult time with is because they're actually asking for another re, uh, teacher for next year, um, to add on to what they've had this year, is that now, and like, uh, Ms. Allen said, that it's not just coming from one school. So, you're taking like a whole group of, let's say, second graders from Piney Point and sending them over there with their teacher. It is you are taking kids from a variety of schools. So, when they open up, let's say, whatever their class is going to be for next year, um, let's say a second grade, you are leaving the other schools to hold the bag of, instead of maybe saying, uh, twenty-six point five students in that class, we now might have twenty-eight students in a class and we're not going to be gaining any more FTEs for teachers. And I just really have a concern of, um, this distribution. Uh, like I said, I think it's a great idea for charter schools because I know somebody's going to misquote me saying that I don't like them. But I do, I think it's a wonderful idea and a wonderful idea for parents to have that choice. But we've got to look, we've got a limited budget, we don't have any, we're not getting any more FTEs. And I guess I, I, you know, as far as like for the other students, that is, you know, that's not fair. You know, I know life isn't fair, but this is their education, this is their growing time. And we need to make sure that the entire system is taken care of, not just one school. And like I said, I have statistics for everything such as like the kindergarten, they have one kindergarten and one para, where we have some, some teachers in some of these kindergarten classes at some of these schools where they have a teacher and the para's running in between classrooms. And you, you, you know, they have specialized kids in the class and so there's like adjustment and, you know, could you imagine being that teacher, trying to button coats, white noses, tie shoes, you know, settle a kid down and not have a para there? I just, you know, I'm, I just, I'm really having a hard time with us not being able to get paras because we don't have the funds and, you know, and it just, um, yet more resources are going to one area because that was the agreement.
Um, it's, it's more the law, I mean, it's, it's.
Well, no, some of it is, I, I just do believe that some, you know, the, you know, the old board, the old administration should have taken, you know, yes, there is a law, but some of the things that could have been placed in there weren't, so. Okay, go on. That's my, sorry, that's my little rant for right now because, you know, I just, I just want to make sure all the students have an equal opportunity and, um, and that the certain teachers are just not overwhelmed. And I just see that that's what's going to happen.
I, I think we're both in agreement on that. I, I also think that it might be helpful for us as we've had conversations about, um, how the charter school works is that, um, we would probably be really well-served to have sort of a comprehensive, um, information item, um, that would allow all of us, um, to understand and, but also for the public to understand. And maybe we could have a conversation about, um, what that might look like and the kinds of pieces that would be helpful to be a part of this. Because it is, um, it is, it is difficult and, and I, I share Mrs. Weaver's, both her concern, but also, um, certainly, uh, have, have, um, been a supporter of the charter school, um, for a long time. It's, but, um, I think in the last couple of years, we've kind of dropped off the radar in some ways. And I think that, um, we would do really well to have a conversation, um, at, at greater depth. And, and I also think, um, I, um, I understand why we have done the budget this way and I, and I applaud it. Um, at the same time, uh, in previous iterations, we had a budget section that just detailed specifically, um, the revenues going to the charter school and then what they've chosen to, um, budget. And, um, a little bit easier to see that breakout of things.
As opposed to.
How we might accomplish that and now with the changes that have taken place at the charter school in terms of their, having purchased their building and the implications that has as far as them being landlords and, um, I have questions about that in this budget, but, um, I, I think it would be helpful to be able to see that comprehensive piece as well.
And I can certainly provide you with just the charter school's budget as it's included in this as a comparison to fiscal two thousand and sixteen, if that would be of help.
I would, thank you.
Right, I, I mean, I, I agree, I agree with both sides. I agree, we're, we're bound by the agreement. I do have to, I do share Mrs. Weaver's concerns, um, regarding class size. I mean, my, my son's sitting in a second grade class with twenty-five kids in it. So, um, you know, is it fair that, you know, someone else is sitting in a class with, you know, twenty-two? But that's also, that to somewhat is also mirrored in different elementary schools, not just at the charter school, just based on where the population bubbles are. Um, but, um, the para educator is, is another good point. Once again, I've, I've seen the paras moving back and forth between kindergarten classrooms. Um, I think what it kind of boils down to is I think, um, just from my personal feeling, I, I mean, I, Mary and I took a tour of the charter school when we went down there for the open house and they celebrated, you know, purchasing the building. And they do absolutely wonderful things there that are just beyond what any type of, forgive me, not an educator, but the traditional school can do. And I think we all support that. I think we just probably need some more dialogue, um, and not that, you know, we're coming down with a heavy hand, like we want to be all in your business and know what you're doing. But, you know, just maybe some periodic updates kind of, uh, as to what you're doing, you know, and, and, you know, and how your, how your students are doing and how your parents are responding and things like that. Um, you know, because there is a, there is a component in the charter school parent involvement that's not seen at the other schools, which probably goes a long way into, um, furthering, you know, you know, getting everyone and having the community involved in that school. And I think that would be, that would be beneficial outside of the money part. So, okay. All right, that being said, uh, let's see, um, I have a question on the, the computer support specialists and the media clerks. I know, can you just expand a little bit on that, like, so are the computer support specialists still going to be in the, in the schools?
Right, so, so.
I'm on tab K.
Yeah. Uh, you brought up class size and fairness and, and staffing decisions and, uh, keep in mind, we are, you know, there are eighteen thousand kids, give or take, um, attending all of our schools. And, and from year to year, bubble to bubble, the problem is that people don't have the same number of kids each year.
Right.
You know, Blizzard, guess what's going to happen?
Super Bowl.
You know, Super Bowl babies, we've seen, we've seen ads. That being said, we only have a finite amount of money and we have fewer kids, so we, we're, you know, we're entitled if, we have to make decisions. We just, we just have to, we just have to make decisions. So, one of the things that we've been looking at is all of this technology that we're buying. The one point nine million dollars that we're pushing into elementary schools, the several million dollars that we spend at middle schools and high schools to put in laptops and, and carts and wireless access points and all of this. This is, we're, we're kind of evolving the instructional paradigm in each one of the buildings. That being said, you'll notice that we're not adding, uh, computer support specialists, IT people. We're not adding, uh, all the people behind that. We have fewer people actually in IT than we had ten years ago, back when they were fixing VCRs and overhead projectors. So, one of the ways that we're trying to put resources into buildings is take a look at the existing staff and figure out, can we evolve a particular position? One of these have been the media clerks and media assistants. We've been talking about all of this. They, they perform incredibly important function within the school. Um, in the elementary, they're actually doing, uh, almost a paraeducator role where they're responsible for the direct construction of children at several different points throughout the day, on top of actual clerking things in and out and taking care of the, the library media resources. In the middle school, we really need a dedicated technology specialist, resident every single day at that school, working in the media center, working with kids, working with teachers and staff. We, originally, back, if money were, as, if we had the money, we would be adding four computer technology support specialists and they would be going into the middle schools. We don't have that luxury, we don't have that money. And more importantly, the county commissioners have been very specific that they will not support any additional FTEs because we have fewer kids today than we had last year. So, we took a look at the media assistants, media clerks at each one of the middle schools. And what we are proposing is that we recognize that that job has evolved and the skill sets of these people working within the buildings more aligns to a computer support specialist role than perhaps the paraeducator working with kids, clerking the materials that we see in the elementary school. So, what we are proposing is that we would evolve that position to a computer support specialist. And then every one of our secondary schools, each one of the high schools, each one of the middle schools would have resident onsite every single day as part of their staff, a computer support specialist. And we can do that through evolving that particular position for, um, much less money, obviously, than if we added in four new positions.
But they, would they roll up under IT at any point or they'd be in?
They would roll up, they would ultimately roll up under IT, they would, they would fall under the purview of IT, but they would be resident in the schools and working with the staff there. Very similar to the model that we currently have at each one of the high schools.
Okay.
Which is why they'll still continue to be housed within this category because they'll be based at the schools.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
I have one question. Uh, on account seven one seven zero supplemental pay, that, do you go change from stipend to some supplemental pay to impact retirement?
No.
In other words, you know, uh, would it now be part of the salary that is the basis for computing retirement?
None at this time. Um, the supplemental pay line that is being utilized here is for summer pay and for, um, our music teachers. And that's not calculated within the retirement calculation.
So, we're not, we're not renaming something that used to be a stipend and now it's supplemental pay? Or is it a trade-off or just changing the name?
Uh, this was part of negotiations, uh, this past year and it's a different form in allocation of what used to be a stipend. So, they're currently being allocated something on a per diem basis, based on the projected number of hours that they'll be working during a time period. But it is not included within their base pay.
Remember I asked you earlier, trying to find the example, this was the example, that I was trying to ask you about.
Does that answer your question?
But I'm, I'm not sure that it doesn't impact retirement. Because the supplemental pay normally is included.
It is very similar in nature to the stipends where it's, it's additional pay on top of or additional responsibilities.
But stipends are not included in that.
That's correct, and, and neither is this.
They will not be, okay.
Anything else under instructional? All right, that moves us to.
So, the category of textbooks and instructional supplies originally reflected an increase of two point three million dollars. And if you recall, that significant portion of that increase is, is the result of the computer replacements at the high schools of one point five million dollars. Uh, on the revision sheet, what you see is actually an increase of a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars recommended. And this is because the school-based library MOI, so the textbooks that the schools are actually purchasing was inadvertently left off from the original calculation.
I do have a question in this category. Remember, everybody's ready.
Well, and I just, I have, I have two things in this category. Um, one is the textbooks and supplies. I asked for an estimation of how you went through and estimated the cost for the, for the new science curriculum. So, thank you very much for that. That was very good, whoever did that. Dr. Morris back there nodding. Um, and then, although I know we had had a question and I, uh, or a discussion about the substitutes and now we're providing lunch for them, which I think is still included. Um, if, if, I mean, it's, it's an easy way to, to have people, um, be happy.
Well, and, right, one of the reasons we instituted it was because they had asked for, um, an increased hourly wage and we're, we were not able to provide it to the extent that they requested. Um, this was proposed as a, um, as a perk, if you will, or.
Um, so, as a point of clarification, um, there are very specific I R S guidelines and therefore it's not in, and intended to be an incentive nor a perk. Otherwise, it would be deemed as a tax.
It's just make them happy.
Well, well, my question is, I guess, you know, once again, just like we, I asked about the furniture, we need to like try to scrap all that money in so that we can buy resources for the classroom to, you know, um, and I just think that we need to take a look at this. Yes, it's a nice thing to do, but where could that money be better spent? Could it be better spent for a teacher so a teacher doesn't have to go out and buy supplies? Could it be better spent on, you know, calculators or, you know, which, oh, I did bring that up later on in my questions. But, you know, it, could this, this money be better spent in another area for, um, I guess, the good of more?
I, I, I have a little bit of a response to that. I guess for, from my understanding, some of the substitutes are called that morning and asked to come into the school. So, like even packing my children's lunches, I'm sometimes scrounging, you know, to put, so if it's something that allows someone to, to accept a substitute position that the administrative assistant doesn't have to keep calling down that list because they know that they'll have lunch provided for them and they don't have to worry about packing a lunch in addition to getting to the, you know, to the, to the school on time, um, you know, it might be, oh, when.
Well, I will tell you that I substituted over in Calvert for two years and I was literally sometimes even called during the, you know, the middle of the day. And I'm going to tell you, I, you know, no lunch was provided for me. I either took the job or I didn't, um.
Maybe that's not why you're substituting there anyway.
No, actually, no, it's because I got, I was working two full-time jobs on top of doing that, so, um, yeah, yeah, I needed my sleep in there. So, I, I'm just saying that, you know, with us having such a tight budget, that we really need to look at wherever we can get the money to, you know, like I said, yes, it's a nice, nice gesture, but at this point, when we are scrapping for money, you know, hey, something, something's got to give and I would rather see it, um, go to, you know, like whether it needs to go to Mr. Howard for, you know, something for his area, you know, because then it's going to benefit a large group of students or a large group of teachers or a large group of maintenance people. Um, I just think it could be better served in another area.
And we could, we could talk about the overall cost for substitution, for substitute teachers and then compensating staff for substituting during their day. Um, we're talking about a total outlay of.
Approximately twenty thousand dollars.
No, 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 for substitutes, we as a system pay.
One point eight million dollars.
So, it's, um, so we, we instituted this as a, this is a fractional cost. So, so if we were to go back and take subpay and like, let's say, we're going to increase everybody's pay by a quarter, there'd be a much more dramatic impact on the overall budget.
No, I'm not saying to increase it, I'm just saying we.
We just, we just struggle, we just struggle to, to get subs into our buildings. I mean, that, as the economy improves and the economy is improving, um, people don't go toward subbing jobs more often.
toward subbing jobs more often. So, like, as the worse the economy is doing, the better off we are for subs.
Well, I will tell you, but because I have a lot of people that will tell me, I wanna sub more, but because of the Obama administration, I, I will tell you, they cannot work more than twenty-nine hours a week and that's where we're running into problems.
Right, well, and then it's just a question of cost. We can most certainly hire them as full-time employees and take them out and, but that's...
But then we would require offering them healthcare.
I know, I'm just asking you because we're scrapping. I, you know, and then the other thing too is I knew that in October, I think it was the October budget when you had put the, this amount in, but it's not reflected in the adopted budget of two thousand and sixteen.
That's correct, because it wasn't a component of the original adopted budget.
Okay.
That was a budget adjustment.
Gotcha.
I, I support leaving the item there for our substitutes. As you point out, twenty thousand dollars as compared to the one point eight million dollars we're spending on substitutes, I, I think it's a, it's a good return on the investment is the way I look at it.
I'm just asking that if we're digging for money, you guys gotta look at stuff. Gotta, it's gotta come from somewhere. Okay.
Okay. We're still on instructional textbooks and supplies, so that takes us through tab L.
Now, so, well, we're, before we, before we leave...
I need to ask about the...
Are there any other questions about instructional textbooks and supplies before we leave?
Yeah, about the anticipated cost of the, it was the textbooks?
Oh, it hasn't been charged.
No, it wasn't, no, it was just ever, it was overall, because I don't know, there was something, it's, the notes on the side were...
There were a lot of them.
Yeah, she has a lot, Tammy does a great job putting notes in there, but I guess I was a little confused with the, the hundred, yeah. The, the ma, the amount to maintain for replacements and the amount for reading, is this like...
Hold on, wait, it's account seven thirty forty, seventy-three forty-one, it's textbooks, and the budget amount is one hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars.
And it says quote, there's a pending quote, and that's what I was referring to when I asked about the anticipated cost.
So, seven three four one textbook specifically, going from a hundred and thirty-eight in the adopted budget of sixteen to a hundred and forty in two thousand and seventeen, that's the question?
No, basically, my whole thing is, is where it says quote pending on the notes, because there's a, there's, you know...
Well, there's several places where seventy-three forty-one is cited. Can you give us a better understanding? Because in one place, we've got, uh...
Okay, we're on...
I think I was right with seventy-three forty-one on that.
Scott, you had the right number.
Yeah, I think I was...
I, I do, but it's labeled that way in several different places. So, here we have textbooks, forty-five hundred dollars for FY two thousand and sixteen and fourteen five.
So, the one hundred and forty thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars of that was to maintain just general replacement textbooks at the schools.
But where you have it, there's a pending quote, do you anticipate it being more than that, the twenty-five hundred, or is that kind of like in the ballpark?
So, Tammy, in the notes, it says quote pending, I think she wants to know if that budget, if that budget thing would be increased and if, if a hundred and forty thousand would be increased for any reason.
We'll have the expert come up and speak to that.
I think it says the HM textbook upgrade.
We originally had that in, we're gonna try to see what we can take care of out of this year's for that. So, that's why the, it was originally in the, our proposal, we're gonna try to see what we can take care of and look at a rolling adoption for it so that we're not trying to take care of all of it at once. So, does that help explain it?
It does.
I was trying to make sure it wasn't gonna increase more, is that correct?
Right, that is correct.
All right, sorry.
No, no, that's exactly what I was looking at, but it was like because the way it was worded there, I wanted to make sure that, and then, the, my, and I know that you answered it, but I guess I was looking for something a little bit different. On the technology hardware, that you had the seventeen hundred requested for mathematics, part calculators, now, are you looking at this just being part of the budget? Are you looking at maybe putting that with, I know this is a small amount right here, but including that maybe in one-time funds when, let's say, computers or, you know, just anything like that, because it's a, it's a one-time buy, that's where I was...
Typically, when we look at the one-time funds, we're looking at larger dollar amounts per item. So, that, that could certainly be consideration though.
Because I didn't know, I knew that's a, like I said, a small amount, all small amounts add up to a large amount, but this is, I'm looking at this as, as being a one-time Maybe other people look at that different, so I, that's where I was thinking, seeing if there's some, you know, some way if we're doing, looking at a one-time purchase of, you know, the computers or one-time purchase of some other technology or something, if this could be added one to.
And annually, when we go through, so we're getting close to the purchasing deadline where it's close out, and then we go through and we sweep all the monies, we put them all together to see what's left over, and then we go back to individual directors and say, so of all the things that you need or is there something that needs to be purchased in this year? And Dr. Morris referred to, you know, some of the textbook purchases that we were able to do last year with the Spanish adoption of texts and things such as that, so this might be something that falls into it as well. Text, calculator purchases from year to year are the bane of my existence, they, you know, the TI eighty-eight, eighty-three, eighty-seven, whatever the silver, whatever the approved calculator of choice at a hundred and twenty-dollar price point is, it keeps on coming back every single year, and we do use swept funds to purchase them, so also do schools. So, your point is well made and I will, we'll take a look just to, just to make sure as we get, if we get a little closer, and Dr. Morris over there making notes about how we'll buy more calculators for incredibly gifted, I can't operate those things, I need plus and minus and divide, that's pretty much where I'm at.
They're scientific calculators.
And I get in enough trouble with that, obviously. I can't navigate a drinking glass, so...
The, under the charter school, I noticed, and maybe Mrs. Hall can help with this one, on the materials of instruction, in two thousand and fourteen, they spent over sixty thousand, two thousand and fifteen, it was down to thirty-three, two thousand and sixteen, the adopted budget was thirty-two nine, and now for two thousand and seventeen, they're up to sixty-one eight. And I understand that some of it was the expanded MOI for additional students. It just seems that it's, it's been a very uneven journey.
Mrs. McCourt and I talked about this yesterday, I actually put a call in to Ms. Onion to make sure that I have the list of materials that she was planning on. I think it was some initial way that you had reported it, if we're that question to use, because she was saying it was...
So, so the, the number that's in your document is correct, what we're looking at are two things. First of all, the charter school submits their original numbers based on the current year's budget, and then we do a budget calculation based on the projected PPA based on our requested funding, and then ever so slightly need to go through and modify their numbers to up it to the PPA calculation that's in the current agreement. As far as the, the variation from year to year, it's not uncommon to see that sometimes at the schools or even in instruction, depending on what your particular consumable needs are in those particular fiscal years. And certainly next year with their proposal to request another classroom size.
Great, thank you.
Let's take us to capital.
Hey, before we leave, before we leave, so...
Wait, do you have something on, okay, sorry.
Okay, so, before we leave textbooks and instructional supplies, we're asking for five point seven million dollars, which is a lot of money, and embedded in that are the two large purchases of computer science, or computer replacements at the high schools, a one-time technology purchase to go in and replace those things that need to be replaced, and a one-time purchase of science textbooks to tune about one point four million dollars. We had kind of touched upon, this is a one-time cost, it could be considered an excludable cost. If the board so directs, Mrs. McCourt, well, me, and I direct Mrs. McCourt, what we can do is we can make an, a concrete recommendation and request to the county commissioners for one-time funding in this current year to purchase science textbooks and computer replacements for the high school. What this would afford us is we'd be able to go forth, make the purchases now, make all the arrangements for delivery, actually know for a fact before we even conclude our school year what resources we're gonna be putting into the, into the system, and we can very planfully put that out. But if the, I, I won't do that unless the board so requests me to make that request.
And if we waited and allowed it to maintain as part of the budget, knowing that those funds wouldn't come in until July first, what is the likelihood that the science textbooks and the technology would be in place when school started mid-August?
It will, it would be, it would definitely be a stress on the system.
You know, I certainly would support making the request since it wouldn't factor into MOI or MOE and, and so if it doesn't become part of the maintenance of effort, that's easier for the commissioners.
Even if we, even if we were to put this through, Ms. McCourt and our previous workings with the county commissioners, they would go back through the budget and they find those things that are one-time costs, and then they petition the state to make it an excludable, and so we're kind of preempting that activity, and it also gives the county commissioners a bit of flexibility to take a look at where they currently stand with their funds and whether or not they could afford us this request. So, okay.
I mean, since they have revenues completed for half the year, so they have a pretty good idea of where their budget is for, for fiscal two thousand and sixteen, as opposed to the guesswork that's involved in, in projecting for, you know, two thousand and seventeen. So, I agree, I would, I would, I would think that it would be beneficial for us to request the funds now rather than waiting and, you know, just, they have, they have a good idea of where they stand at this point in time.
Right.
Okay, and Ms. McCourt, well, we have, we have some work to do this week.
Anyone else? Yes, no?
I agree, we definitely need the science textbooks so that when the students come to school, the materials will already be there, the books will be there, the computer replacements will be in place, and it makes it easy and a smooth transition to start off the school year.
But, just to make it official, I would recommend someone make a motion and we vote on it and put it in the, if you're gonna, if you're gonna send it forward.
We can't, because it's a work session.
Yeah, it's a work session, we can't do that.
I mean, what I can do is we can put together all the paperwork and we'll bring it back around for you.
So, our stronghold says yes, don't go through all that work and then we'll say no.
Right, we'll go through, we'll go through that, we'll point that all up and then we'll bring it back around for your consideration.
Well, and given that we have the public hearing coming up for next week, if you believe that you can have it by Wednesday, we certainly could advertise it that we would take that action at the beginning of that public hearing. But I, I turn to Mr. Law just to make sure that I'm correct in... That way, we'd be able to go forward with it to the commissioners a bit sooner.
Fantastic, okay.
Can I vote now?
Of the class next week.
Okay, all right, anything else on textbooks?
Other instructions.
All right, other instructional costs, moving on.
Okay, so if you recall, the other instructional costs, the original budget that was proposed reflected a decrease of one point four million dollars, and that was as a result of the computer lease being paid off on your sheet. Now, we're showing an additional reduction of eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars, of which a portion of those monies were moved up to the other category to absorb all the e-school costs into one account. Are there any other questions on other instructional costs at this time?
Well, I have a question that goes back to the revenue side and then I see it within the expenditure side. There seemed that Apex had been zeroed out on revenue, but within the budget, I see, you know, Apex dollars and Apex program manager and such. What is the disconnect that I'm thinking about here?
I'll have to get that information, I, I don't recall right offhand what the specifics were, please.
I think I might, and that would be that the Apex was originally funded through a grant from America's Promise, and once that grant ran, so it was documented, and then once that grant ran out, we elected to continue the program because of the significant positive impact it was having. And so, I, I believe that's it.
Well, yeah, so seven two ninety-nine does have, so it, in two thousand and fifteen, there was only thirty thousand dollars in that account, and what happened in two thousand and sixteen was it ballooned up to two hundred and fifty-four thousand, and that's because we had to include and cover the cost of Apex as well as some additional component pieces to e-school plus. That has continued over and Performance Matters as well. So, in the seventeen recommended budget, under seven two ninety-nine, other contracted services, that does include Apex, Performance Matters, e-school plus, and I believe just some, some streaming things. But that's, that's where they come from. As far as Apex never, shouldn't have ever been on the revenue side, other than perhaps for a very modest amount, and if we ran it in summer school, perhaps we...
I believe that that's what the case was.
That would be, but that would only be a couple of thousand dollars, I would imagine. That was the, that was the charging that we did.
For students who were taking original credit.
For students in the summer, right, would come in, but that was a, I don't know...
Is that what you were talking about, Mr. Horn?
Yeah, it was, it says Apex Summer School and then it went to zero.
And is that, is that because we can't predict how many students will ask to take, to utilize Apex for original credit in summer school?
Right, in summer school, right, right.
I know Ms. Montgomery sent us all out that information not too long ago. Let's see if I did.
Okay, well, we can... Right, we'll come back to that.
Are we all done? With that? Anyone? Okay, all right. I know you have adjustments now until student transportation, but we still have a couple more tabs in here.
Okay.
All right, so special education. All right, there's no changes based on the reduction from the state, so anyone have any questions on this tab?
I do. Okay, so, once again, this is for Gretchen, I am very much for the charter school, okay, and the choices that parents have and students, because not, it's not a one-size-fits-all. But, when, where is it about the, they are requesting another para educator, a special ed para educator. They currently have two special education teachers, two special education paras, and one special educational instructional para. And their student population, this is, I just went off of what it currently is, or, actually, I did go back to two thousand and fifteen statistics to find this because this is the most recent. Out of two hundred and forty-two students, they have sixteen students who receive those services. But then when we look at example Piney Point, we have two special ed teachers and one special ed para for fifty students. Letty Dent, two special education teachers, one special education para for thirty-three. And I know it fluctuates from year to year, who's on there and who is not, but I know this is an area that we struggle to get good teachers in this area, and even teachers that have these certifications and degrees. And, once again, you know, like I said, it's, it's a great program over there, but I don't wanna be taking resources or anything from the students that also desperately need those services at other schools. And this, and I know Ms. Bailey brought up before about maybe getting together, I really think that that is a great idea for us to sit down with their staff and say, look, this is what we have, and, you know, so that they understand that we're gonna be... is what we have, and, you know, so that they understand that we're going to be, you know, struggling in some areas because of what they are requesting or their needs. And I just think that we, we need to open up a dialogue so that it is, I guess, so that we're all, I guess, more well-rounded, and that people aren't, you know, not receiving, well, I shouldn't say not receiving services, because they have to be given, but that some of these teachers that are in the elementary school, I, I do know at Piney Point where they are, you know, because, you know, I've also volunteered there in the past, that they are running from class to class, literally. So, I just, you know, trying to provide those services for these students, I just think that we need to really take a step back, work with the charter school and saying, hey, this is, this is what we have, we, you know, we can't just keep, you know, doling out. And I know this is part of the agreement, but I just think that we just really need to sit down and have a overall conversation on kind of, and what's going on. Because I just want to make sure that all students are receiving what they, you know, what, not just, what they deserve, but also what is, you know, what is required, and, and that the teachers are not just overloaded. So, sorry, that was mine, on that one.
And the special education staffing plan will come back very specifically to you as well, that, that is something that we'll have, we'll have a public discussion about as we go through the process into May, so, right, May?
I thought it was earlier than that.
Yeah, I think it comes back.
And as we've moved through this, the recommended changes you've made to the budget we have in front of us, we somewhat skipped over the fact that the 12 para educators that we, that you had originally put in the budget, because of the decreased funds that we had anticipated, decrease in funds we had anticipated from the state, you've had to back those 12 paras out of your recommended budget.
Right, instructional salaries and wages, the 12 that were put in are taken out, and also then for fixed charges, you see the decrease as well, because it's, the salary is broken up, the benefits package is broken up across those two.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we reference the fact that we've had to do that.
I have a question on the, I know I asked for the FTE reconciliation of where everyone was being shifted. Is that, and I know it's in here in all the notes, but is that, is that something that we can summarize and provide along with our documents to the county commissioners? And the only reason I say that is because I remember last year, you know, they were like, oh, well, here's an added FTE, and then there was a lot of miss
Right, at the very end, even though we talked very specifically about the fact that we were adding FTEs
Right.
At the elementary level to offset some of these very large class sizes, that didn't get communicated back to the county commissioners, they were going with our original FTE count. So, there are 1,200 positions spread across all the schools. We won't know how many are going to be in elementary, and middle, and high, until probably July, mid-July to
Right, but I'm, I'm just saying, as, like, if, if they get the same level of detail that we get, and if, and if they see all shifting and adding and all this other stuff
They do not.
They don't, okay.
Because these include contractor names of specific, very specific to us.
It's a, it's a new point.
So, they get the, the formal document, which lays it out by category, and by category, will very clearly define for them any categorical changes with term minimal this year.
Okay, because I mean, I think, I think everyone's been very cognizant about not adding FTEs, so I don't want to have any type of misconception that we are adding FTEs anywhere within the budget before it goes forward.
Right, the, the restricted, the unrestricted budget FTE total, our goal is to have that number be the same as it was
Okay.
In 2016.
There you have it, okay.
It's just reallocated across the
No, there may be movement here or there, but yes.
No, I think actually that's a good idea, because I, I did have a difficult time. I did, I go, I went through and says, okay, one was that, put here, and one's taken from here, and a point two, and a point one, and it was, you know, I'm still having, trying to figure out where everybody went, so that might be good to sit down with you and, and try, when you have time.
And I'll have a very clear, I'll have a very clear conversation with Ms. Cudmore, with the county government as well about that.
Okay.
But just to, to the, to the point that what, what will happen after, so we're going through the whole budget, right, so we don't even know where we stand, but in April, we'll be looking at all of our enrollment projections, all of our current kids sitting in all of our elementary schools, and as we're building the budget for each one of the high schools in the four, so we'll be looking at all of that, and in the very first part of May, we send out to teacher, we send out to the building principals, here's what your staff allocation looks like it may be, it may plus or minus, depending upon the variation throughout the entire time. We, the one thing we, that we are trying to do is make sure that we do not change the bottom line.
Right, okay. So, that's out there.
Yes.
Right. Anything else on special education?
Nope, we're done.
All right. Student Personnel Services.
And we had no additional proposed changes here either.
Correct. That's
And I don't recall receiving any questions.
Nope. Mine's posted nuke free.
Yeah, so is mine.
Got all my stickies.
Moving on.
Okay, Student Health Services is our next one.
And no proposed changes here either, and I don't recall receiving any questions on this category.
Anything?
Nope, mine were the next one.
All right.
Well, and my, my question was, is the ultimate goal to have just RNs in the school system?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you.
And part of that is that people, I'm not even sure there are any LPN schools any longer.
I, I think there's, there, there might be one or two left.
But it's very difficult.
But the thing is, is, okay, the, the criteria for what needs to be done, an LPN has to have an oversight of an RN.
So, you
So, it's not cost-effective.
Right.
I mean, you kind of
Yep.
We could do it in a high school, where you have two nurses.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Student Transportation.
So, the requested increase was $193,000. We just received updated numbers from MAB for the insurance, which reduces that increase by $33,812.
Go MAB.
And this is tab Q. Anything for anyone?
But I'm in, my next one's in R.
So, under Student Transportation, it was, said they were going to have a new route or something, the last time we got together, and I was wondering, since we have fewer students and another grade at the charter school, is, is there a, a different distribution of our students that require an additional route?
Jeff Thompson will speak to that.
Thank you.
Well, we Right, and student counts have not, yeah, increased, but we've had some different needs of some of our students, because primarily it's the routes we're asking for, special needs routes, and some students with different programs, I mean, it only takes one student at one school to adjust the whole schedule of how we operate our buses, and so it's, the needs been there, we've been really trying to manage the best we can, but it's been an extreme challenge trying to make sure we have the services, you know, we can provide the transportation for those kids, and we, we push it close with some of our times, and we've had some issues with that, but it really is a necessary item for us to try to make sure we have enough buses to cover our, our routes that we need for our special needs routes.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on Student Transportation? Okay. That moves us to Operation of Plant. That's your tab R.
So, that was an original increase of $138,000. We now have a proposed decrease of that number by $93,111. That is as a result of stipend reduction for the negotiated agreement, refuse disposal of $50,000, an increase in this line for the property insurance, and utilities reduction of $44,725.
I guess I had some questions here. Under, for director, the, in one place, so on the back of the first page, it shows the director FY 2017 at 108605, but when you page down to, and maybe I'm
So, these are different directors?
Okay.
Within this category, we have Mr. Barner, and we have Mr. Wyatt.
Okay, that explains. So, they fall on different places in the scale?
Yes.
Right. Now, my question was on the water testing, and I know that you, or someone answered back, but I guess I'm, what it is, is the annual water testing fee, and I know there was a decrease from last year, but I guess what I was looking at is, because of the White Marsh Elementary School, the, where the septic that is going to be redone, I guess I looked at, well, I don't think I have to do more water testing, just to make sure the safe, the water is safe for drinking, if, or does that come from a different area?
Mr. Whitten?
Good morning, Mr. Whitten.
Oh, you. Uh, no, we do not have to do any additional testing with the potable water at White Marsh Elementary School during the renovation of the septic.
Okay.
The decrease is a decrease you'll see every third iteration of the budget. Every third year, we have to do an increased amount of water testing system-wide. So, every third year, you'll see increase, and then the year after that, you'll see a decrease of the same amount.
Okay. Every three years, so you have that on there. Okay, thank you. That answers my question, thank you.
You are.
And then I have a question, and it's on the last page, and it might be for Mrs. Hall to take note of, and that is, within the charter school, I noticed that they have zeroed out their line for pest control, for refuse disposal, for fire alarm systems, they've added one for contracted temp agency, and then a significant hike in rent slash, I guess, mortgage. And so, are those services going to be carried in a different way? Because they also, on the next page, they've zeroed out utilities communication, utilities electricity, and utilities sewage. Where are those, where are those costs going to be reflected?
I can actually respond to that question.
Please.
All of those costs are actually on the page before that, and that'll be embedded within the rental costs going forward.
Okay. And, and that goes for the pest control and so forth?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh-uh.
Whoever provided the very detailed report on the security upgrades, thank you.
That's Mr. Wyatt, yes.
Where is he? I appreciate that.
He's good.
That left me with no more outline questions.
Gentlemen, sir.
Okay. Operation of Plant, everyone's good? Tab R. All right, now Maintenance of Plant, tab S.
We had no additional recommended changes.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
For what question?
I'm on tab S.
No.
No.
Kathy, Mary?
Nope, I'm good.
All right. Fixed Charges.
So, the fixed charges category was originally presented with a $2.5 million increase for recommending a $344,000 decrease in the areas of health insurance, $192,000 reduction as a result of removing the para positions, liability bond, $38,590, vehicle insurance, $11,410 reduction, workers' compensation, $59,832, and social security associated And just for your point of reference, MAB always reviews the next year's budget in the month of January, or the first week of February.
Okay, anything on fixed charges, and then tab T? Do you need to check any?
We will be meeting with our health insurance vendor by the end of this month, so we'll have a better understanding of our health insurance costs for next year.
She answered it. Call me on here.
Okay. All right. She needs a psychic now. All right. You've already answered her question, so
Yeah, well, that was because she got them ahead of time.
All right, Capital Outlay for School Facilities.
And we just had one recommended change from the original increase of $74,273, and that was in the amount of $5,000, as it was already included within the DSS component of the capital outlay category.
My only question was on the Elms Master Plan, and that was answered, so thank you once again to whoever pulled that together.
Yeah, it was very extensively explained. Whoever wrote it up, was that you? Thank you.
Okay, anything on capital outlay? All right, Food and Nutrition Services. We're onto the revolving fund.
I have one general question on the, on the first part. At one time, the, the county required us to estimate lapse rate, where, in other words, we didn't have everybody on board
For lapse salaries.
And for salaries and such, do, do they still require that?
We're doing it, I don't know if they're requiring it or not. I believe that there was $450,000 that was included in the instructional salaries category.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything on Food and Nutrition Services? Anyone?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Once again, thank you very much to everyone. I'm sure it was a struggle at some point.
So, I'd like to just
Yes, thank you for answering my question so quick.
Right. So
If I may, just take an opportunity to kind of recap where we were on the revenues. We had reduced it by the $1.3 million, based on the state revenues, and we added in the $400,000 for the handicap tuition based on what we just recently saw in January, so that provides an overall reduction of $986,000 for state revenue sources. With the same level of changes on the expenditure side, that brings down the recommended budget to $210,000, $210 million.
$51,046. But I've been told to always just say $210 million, just round it up.
I had one question on the revenue side. Have we changed our policy about renting out facilities?
The policy has not been changed, however, we've moved those costs and the revenues, offsetting revenues over to the restricted fund to be able to manage them better, so they're, they're directly aligned to the expenses.
Okay.
But we made that move in fiscal year 2016. So, in closing, next week, we'll be meeting on, we'll be having the public hearing with the adoption of the budget, or the approval of the budget anticipated for February 24.
Anything else? Last chance? No, once again, thank you.
So, we will go through and update the, the, the general document as well, to reflect the cuts that we have discussed today, to make everything align, post it accordingly.
Thank you.